The Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting for Douglas County, Nebraska, for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
We'll start with our Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of admitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, C through E, which we can vote in block plus adjournment if desired. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Was there anybody here that wanted to speak on any of the equalization resolutions? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes Board of Equalization. We'll now go into Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, items A through G. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion? Motion by Morgan to approve, second by Rogers. Is there any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Good morning, esteemed Commissioners. My name is Christopher McMahon. I'm a deputy county attorney for C, signature of all rise for justice under the BJA award. I'm a prosecutor for the Douglas County Veterans Treatment Court. Last year, I applied for a funding scholarship from the National Association of Drug Corp Professionals for $22,350 to fund our training for this annual year. We were granted that. I'm just asking that you vote to approve it. All of that money comes from the NADCP. None of that will be provided through county funds. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here and for your initiative on that item. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda?
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Thank you. We'll jump to Section 8 on our agenda, Committee Discussion and Action. First, we have Finance with Budget Report as presented. We also have our Monthly Fee Report also as presented, which takes us to Child and Youth Services Committee. We do have a presentation under this committee on the Douglas County Youth Center and the Jack as well, 2024 year-end data.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an update on our DCYC population. We will cover our year-end population, and then we will also look at some trends of where we were in the month of December and then where we are as of a couple weeks ago. This graphic starts out with our law enforcement citations and arrests, so it shows what our law enforcement contact among youth under the age of 18 looked like over the last few calendar years. As you can see, in 2024, our number of citations and arrests of juveniles decreased. It went from 3,200 in 2023 to about 2,600 in 2024. Next, looking at our admissions to DCYC by court type, you can also see that we had a decrease in our total number of admissions to detention. We were at 746 last year, which is a decrease from 871, and we're coming pretty close to where we were in 2022. Of those 746 youth, 107 were admitted in adult court and 611 were admitted in juvenile Breaking down our admissions by gender, you can see that we've had about 20% of our admissions accounted for by girls. That's been pretty steady since about 2020. We also have our race, our admissions broken down by race and ethnicity. Youth of color continue to be overrepresented in the DCYC population relative to their proportion in the community. We have about 20% of our population, or 20% of our admissions, were for white youth in the last year. 56% were black and about 15% were Hispanic. One of the things to note is that we have seen an increase in our Asian population of DC in regards to admissions. So we were sitting at about 2% in 2018 and 2020. That increased to about 4% and 5% in 2021 and 2022 respectively, and then in '23 and '24, we were at about 6% and 6.5%. So even though we've had a decrease in our admissions, we have seen an increase in our average daily population. So we were sitting at about 88 youth in DCYC on any given day during the last calendar year. 32 of those youth were admitted on charges in adult court and 54 were admitted on charges in juvenile court. Looking back, this actually, this shows our average daily population along with our fluctuation. So in 2024, again, you can see that yellow line shows our average daily population of 88. We had a low point of 76 and a high point of 104 in terms of our total population numbers last year. This is the same graphic, but just with regard to adult court youth. So our average daily population of 32. During 2024, our lowest adult court population was 25 and our highest adult court population was 40. Similarly, with our juvenile court population, our average daily population is that brown line. You can see it's at 54 for the calendar year 2024. The lowest number of juvenile court youth we had in detention last year was 42, and the highest number we had was 68. So if our admissions are down and our average daily population is up, it's likely attributable to the increases in our average time to release. So from the time youth are admitted to DCYC, from the time that they are released, youth were spending about 68 days with us in 2024, and this is about a three-day increase over where we were in 2023, and about 12 to 13 days, so almost two weeks from where we were in 2022. The adult court youth that we had in detention last year stayed for an average of 156 days, and our juvenile court youth stayed for an average of 48 days. This graphic breaks down the admissions looking just over the last two calendar years, but it breaks it down by month, just so we can see some of the fluctuations that exist. Usually, we see some increases in early February and March, and then a decrease right as the time school's getting out in May, and then some other, kind of another seasonal increase in that August-September time, right when school's coming back into session. So we saw those in 2024, but they were not as pronounced as what you can see on this graphic for 2023, and that's also similar to where we were in previous years. So our admissions were a little bit more constant this year, but we did see a decrease in our admissions for December. So we went from an average of about 60-ish for the rest of the calendar year down to 47 in December. So now, we're going to focus just on what our population looked like in December. So during December, we had an average daily population of 87 youth in detention. Our low point was 84 and our high was 91. On the first of the month, we were at 85, and on the last day of the month, we had 91 youth in detention. The home program screened nine youth. One of those referrals was from probation, and the remaining eight were from the courts, and six youth were accepted and placed on the home program. We also had 41 youth released in December. Their average time to release was 43 days. Five youth were adult court. 17 of the releases were for juvenile court predisposition youth. Five youth released had been admitted on probation with new charges, and 14 were on probation without new charges. So again, we had 47 youth admitted, 10 were on adult court charges, 36 were on Douglas County juvenile court charges, and one was admitted from another county. When we look at the offenses for which these youth were admitted, eight were admitted on weapons charges, and that does include one youth who had committed a homicide. 17 youth were admitted with technical violations or no new offenses. 19 had committed felony offenses other than weapons-related charges, and two had misdemeanors other than weapons-related charges. When we look at those eight youth who had weapons offenses, only one youth was admitted for possession of a firearm. The other seven were all admitted for the use of a firearm, and again, that does include one youth who had used the firearm in commission of a homicide. These youth were not generally admitted just on one charge. They also had other offenses underlying them, so that one youth who had a firearm possession charge also had charges of theft and criminal mischief. The additional charges for the youth who had used firearms included homicide, attempt of a Class II felony, firearm possession, assault, obstructing an officer, unlawful absence, flight to avoid arrest, and failure to pay fines and costs. Again, there were 17 youth who were admitted on technical violations or who were on probation and were admitted for a reason other than a new offense. All 17 of those youth were in juvenile court. Or no, I apologize. 12 of those youth were on probation and had no new offense. Five of those youth were predispositioned. So the reasons for admissions included 10 for unlawful absence, three violations of probation, two failures to appear, one with fines and costs, and one who was admitted by court order. The charges underlying these youth are a mix of felony, misdemeanor, and traffic offenses. So with regard to the felony offenses, we have a number of interpersonal offenses, assault, robbery, sexual assault, and then another, we have other offenses just related to unlawful occupancy, carrying a concealed weapon, theft, and accessory to a felony. With regard to our misdemeanor offenses, again, we have a mix of some interpersonal offenses and some property and other related offenses, so including obstruction of an officer, assault, disorderly conduct, attempting a felony, trespassing, criminal mischief, burglary. And then one youth who also had an underlying offense of misuse of a learner's permit. When we look at youth who had committed felonies other than weapons-related offenses, we had two youth in adult who were admitted in adult court and 17 youth who were admitted in juvenile court. Drug possession and theft were the most common types of felony offenses for which these youth were admitted, but we do also see three youth with assault, and then one youth each for robbery, sexual assault, terroristic threats, flight to avoid arrest, and criminal mischief. And then for the youth who had committed other misdemeanors, both of those youth are predispositioned in juvenile court. One had assault, an assault charge, and one was charged with tampering with evidence. As of January 31st, we had five youth in detention with court orders to be released at the time appropriate placement is available. On average, these youth had been waiting 66 days from the time the court was, the court order was issued up through January 31st. Two youth are waiting for shelter, and three youth are waiting for group home placements. Of the group home placements that have been approved, one is an in-state location, and two of those group homes are out of state. And again, you can see a list here of the underlying charges for which these youth have. With regard to felony offenses, they have drug possession, theft, attempt of a Class II felony, and possession of burglars' tools. The underlying misdemeanor charges are criminal mischief, disorderly conduct, weapon possession, possession of burglars' tools, obstructing a peace officer, disturbing the peace, and So we've looked at the annual trends, and we've also looked at that snapshot for the month of October. One of the things we thought would be important is also just to show a snapshot of where we are a little bit more currently. So this is our population as of January 13th. So on January 13th, we had 95 youth in detention. Three youth were from other jurisdictions. 42 youth were charged in adult court, and 50 were charged in juvenile court. Of those juvenile court youth, 18 were on predisposition status, 15 were on probation with new charges, and 17 were on probation and admitted for reasons other than a new charge. Similar to what we saw in the previous graphics, we do have an overrepresentation of youth of color and male youth. Youth of color take up account approximately 90% of the DCYC population on that date, and 93% of our population was male. We also had 10% of our population who were under DHHS custody as state wards. Looking at the age of admission and the court type for our youth who are in DCYC on January 13th, the majority of our youth are in that 15 to 18-year-old range. 83% were 15, 16, or 17 years old. We did have 16 youth who were 13 or 14 in detention. Overall, when we look at it by court type, the average age is still in that 15 to 15 and a half range. We also provide some information here with regard to the length of stay for youth who are currently in DCYC. So of the youth on January 13th, 61% had been in detention for over 45 days. This includes 29 youth in adult court, eight who were, who had new charges while on juvenile probation, 10 on juvenile probation without new charges, and nine who are in a predisposition status in juvenile court. With regard to probation status at intake, 59 youth were on juvenile probation at the time that they entered DCYC. This includes 57% or 24, or 24 of our adult court youth, as well as all three of our youth who were admitted from other counties. And then finally, we also wanted to provide some information based on the readmission status. So 39 youth who came into DCYC or who were in DCYC on January 13th were readmitted within six months of a previous release. Of those 39 youth who had been in DCYC previously, 31 were on juvenile probation at the time that they came back. So 17 adult court youth, or 40% of all adult court youth in detention on January 13th, had been readmitted within the last six months, and 14 of those youth were on probation. And then the other court types are delineated there below. So thank you, and if you have any questions, we are happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Carball. And I have asked both Abby and Kim to send this out electronically so we can continue to review it and process it. We'll jump into questions and comments, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I don't see any information on the new kids' jail in here. Is that because it's empty?
Yes.
Okay. And the report that you handed us seems to be work product of the Youth Center Director, Rondi Woodard. Is he going to address us here today?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thanks. And thanks for this. A couple of questions. I think I got that the average daily population is 88. I'm looking at like page seven. I'm looking at the average daily population, and I thought I, I got it at 88. Maybe it's page six, where it has average daily population in 2000 was 71, and 2021 was 56, and 2022 was 69. In 2023, it was 79, and in 2024 is 88, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so that's a fairly significant trend up over the last five years, and I'm looking at the current population, today's population. Is it 95?
91 this morning.
91 this morning? Okay.
Yeah, we have 82 males and one, and seven females. I mean, nine females.
Right, right. Now, what's the current capacity of the Douglas County Youth Center?
Currently, we have 132-bed facility.
I'm sorry?
132-bed facility.
132?
Yes.
The average length of stay, and here I think I'm looking at maybe page 10, appears to be, is it 68 days, average time to release on page 10?
Yes, yes, it's 10, it's 68 days.
So most kids are there, most of these average daily population, 88 kids, are there for a couple months?
Yes.
Right. And 61% over 45 days? I think that was later in the report, but that, that appears to be, the longer population would be kids held for adult court mostly? Is that right?
Actually, the, the numbers have grown in both courts.
Could you?
The numbers have grown in both courts.
In both courts?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And we don't have any control over that. I mean, just to be clear, Douglas County takes who the courts sent us, and the courts take who charges are filed on by the county attorney, and the county attorney files charges on the basis of who the police arrest.
Yes, and we only release when we are given a court order to release.
So we have no control over admissions and no control over release?
Yes, sir.
We have total control over housing.
Yeah.
And you do a good job of that, I must say.
Thank you, sir.
So we've got this average length of stay of 68 days, with most of them staying at least 45 days.
15 seconds.
90% of the population are minority kids, overwhelming majority-minority population, right?
Yes.
And that's been pretty static.
Yes.
That has not changed. I think the minority population in Omaha, I'll come back.
Okay, next time. Do you want a second round, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Oh, thank you. 90% of the population is minority. I think the population of Douglas County for minorities might be under 30%. And so minority kids are way overrepresented in the population of kids who get locked up, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. 41% of these kids come back within six months. That would be a recidivism rate? Is that fair to say?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Have you seen any change in that? I, I don't recall seeing that in private, previous reports, but...
No, I would have to say that's pretty consistent with what we've been seeing over the course of the last couple of years.
Okay. So if you look at these graphs, they don't represent a decrease so much as an increase over the last five years in average daily population, in average length of stay. Actual cases have gone up, and just recently, in Sunday's New York Times, and I'll share this with the board, was a New York Times Magazine article about this exact topic. And it showed nationwide some numbers that aren't showing increases. I mean, what we're seeing here, despite what we've heard about the great reforms in juvenile justice locally, are increases in all of the major metrics, particularly increases in the number of kids locked up. And the point here is, we built this kids' jail for, what's the capacity of that place?
64 beds.
Okay. And never in the entirety of its existence have we ever been at 64 beds. As a matter of fact, we've done nothing but increase from the 70s to 88, 91 today. So that place was obsolete when it was designed, and, you know, we've had that discussion. That's been on public record. I've made this over and over and over. It stands empty today, which is nothing, no reflection on you. What is a reflection on you is you do an excellent job with the existing youth center, but it needs to be upgraded. It needs to be refurbished. And I'd be very interested in seeing from you folks some ideas along those lines to see how we can, how we can better serve this growing population of minority kids, who we seem content to keep locking up in greater and greater numbers, in a facility that during the expenditure of all the resources on the empty kids' jail, really got none of the benefit from that. As a matter of fact, I think you'll recall, a year ago, right now, there was an extreme cold spell, and the heat went out at the youth center. I was there, I think you were there, and we had blankets on kids, which is atrocious considering heat never went out in this empty facility across the street. As a matter of fact, we're paying for the utilities to keep it warm and keep the plumbing on. Again, not your decision, but a horrible miscarriage and misapplication of resources to spend tens of millions of dollars on a facility that hasn't helped a single kid and nothing comparable on a facility that we're trying to help an increasing population of kids.
10 seconds.
And so, you know, I'm interested in an ongoing conversation because we've got to do the best we can with the hand that we are dealt. And so hopefully, you and your fine administration will be included in talks going forward to see how we can improve this situation. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rondi, the capacity is 144, but the operational capacity is 96 because of PRIA. Am I correct?
Yes, but yeah, I'm just saying, we have 132-bed facility, not 144.
But the operation capacity is 96 because of PRIA.
For 96, yes.
And PRIA is the Rape Elimination Act?
Yes.
That you have to have a certain amount of staff per people there?
It's a eight-to-one ratio.
Okay, so I just want to make that on record.
So let me say, let me correct a few things of information. So, I mean, I'm past the stage of, you know, what the place is called. I mean, that's sticks and stones, let me break my bones type stuff. Let me talk a little bit more realistically about, I think, the misinformation that's been put out. So two weeks ago, I sat in a meeting in North Omaha where the police chief and the mayor says crime is down, and the police chief showed numbers of juveniles, and their encounters with juveniles are down 100. So when it said that you're taking articles from the New York Times and everything is down and we're not down, I think that's false information. I mean, you just saw the numbers that say the arrests are down, and, and the admittance is down, so that doesn't say that in any way. I think the glaring statistic that stands out is the fact that the length of stay has grown, and as you said, when the question was asked to you, it's an adult and juvenile. Now, you know, the points made about you don't have any control, you all do, you do a good job running the facility, but the situation that we're in is more of our control, as it was said here. We control the capacity, and we control what happens. So the conversation or comments that's made about your facility needs to be upgraded, that can't happen until the facility, until you move a facility. And I'm looking at you, but I'm talking in general, so don't, you're a face... And I'm looking at you, but I'm talking in general, so don't, your face don't, I'm not addressing this to you. But I say that because I do want to engage, I guess, my colleague when the statements are always made, and I appreciate my colleague's statements in respect to the fact that ninety percent of the kids in there are of color. And I respect those comments when they're made about the adult facility. Because the fact is, it has a little more impact when a white male makes it than a male of color. Because when somebody of color makes it, it seems like you're just playing the violin. But I do want to challenge the fact that if you want to do something about the number of kids in there that are of color, then you gotta do something about the programming. And that goes back to the fact of, we can move an adult facility in two months. When you look at these numbers, sixty-one percent of the kids in there are on probation. If that kid is on probation, the system has deemed that kid to not be violent and to need a service. And so the situation that we're in in regards to length of service, in regards to a facility, is because everybody in the system is not doing their job. And a little bit of that is on us, because the pre-adjudication piece is us. And that is the point that we need to do some restructuring on. And so I just want to say that to clear the piece up, is that if there's really a serious conversation about trying to address the kids of color, we can do that by making probation push its low. And that we don't have any control over, but every day that we don't push them, they feel no pressure to do that. Let's take comments that were made by the Chief Justice in his state of the judiciary report. And he's pretty much begging the legislature to give them money because they lack the probation services and they lack the behavioral health services. So I just say that to put there that we don't have this increase in crime. Stats say it, the the police chief has said it, the mayor has said it. What we have is everybody in the system needing to upgrade and hold their weight to address the length of stay. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Is there any other question or comment on the presentation? Larry?
Thank you. Larry Store, five oh one five La Veda Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I might want to ask a little bit more time than usual and without getting cut off, because I know a little bit about this topic. At eighty-one years old, I grew up in a southwest Iowa town where everybody knew what everybody was doing. If you did something wrong, the phone rang. You maybe went to the woodshed or worse. But everybody talked. And one of the problems with the system is, we're hearing from two of you today that have been here for a long time. The biggest problem is the privacy law that says that therapist or that deputy or whoever the expert is with their best practices cannot talk to me because I don't have custody of the teenager or whatever. They they misinterpret the intent of those laws. And yet we hear you people saying, oh, we want these garages for the whole families to be able to come down and not be seen walking across the street to the center where our children are covered up. They don't have to walk in orange suits across the street or out of the bus. The good, do-gooders, feel-gooders have ruined the system. I'm not blaming you guys. But if you remember a long time ago, Mr. Kavanaugh, probably Mr. Rogers, there was a project called the Sunshine Project. There was a very nice lady that tried to make a big difference in Omaha, but like most other things, you didn't listen. One of the reasons was the privacy laws. She even lot lots of your meetings, lots of your subcommittee meetings. And it led to no good when the question of the juvenile system was taken out of the hands of the citizens and decided by somebody else according to best practices. Oh, yeah, you couldn't talk to us about it because of privacy laws. I I had a lot of experience in Boy Scouts. I had trouble when I was a kid. I knew other kids that did. My dad was in trouble. I've been in Boy Scouts for a long time. I worked for Adult Corrections and Council of Us at the old winery building. Sort of halfway house, I guess, for young adult offenders that were hopefully going out into the workforce. I worked at Boys Town, my family worked at Boys Town when they brought in the new system. And we had eight of the boys from the old system in our cottage. My children were four and two. It was a great time, but the administrative pressures got to us and we couldn't stay there. Fast forward, I started getting involved downtown here and going to subcommittees where, there we go, time's up. Subcommittee meetings where we could say something, but then it never really made any difference. Well, I have a grandson that's been in the system for a long time, since about sixth grade. And again, a long history, he's now twenty-five, just missed the cutoff point, the new law. He no longer qualifies for the young adult stuff. He's now on probation. So I do know a lot about things and I I am very active in my emails about the system, particularly now with my grandson just being adjudicated without hearing the evidence about, hey, I'm sorry, he does have a mental illness, don't you care about that? Nah, we don't want to hear it, you're not the you're not the custodian. I'll tell you what, the system has created an animal. He's been in these group homes. I can tell you about a lot of those group homes, many of them. I can tell you about the IEPs and the IPPs, many agencies.
That's time, Larry.
Again, people didn't want to know information from the people that knew the children best, and that was family.
Thank you, Larry.
A grandparent is not allowed in the state of Nebraska, and thank you very much for...
Thank you, Larry.
Let everybody else talk as long as you want, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Go Louis and then Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Louis Jimenez.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner, we're gonna do Louis quick and then we'll go to you.
Louis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm been observing the this board for quite a long time and I think the biggest factor as to why we are here is that the board decided that they were going to let let HDR and Burlington Capital do on-the-job training so that they can expand their services in providing detention centers to their potential clientele. And they were said they're the experts. HDR and Burlington Capital, they were identified as the experts. And I think we should learn from that experience. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to a third two-minute round for Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just in conclusion, I hope that we get this very good report from Director Woodard posted as soon as possible on the county thing so that people can see it on our website. This is a disastrous report of an increasing number of primarily juvenile population kids being locked up and not addressing at all the tens of millions of dollars that were wasted on the kids jail fiasco across the street, which stands empty. Despite the increase in your property taxes, not a single child has been benefited by that and not a single improvement has been made in the Douglas County Youth Center, which is run by excellent people in a building that needs to be upgraded. We need to take into account the reality of the situation, which is the kids jail was a real estate construction scheme, resulted in tens of millions of dollars of pure waste.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Sits empty.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah.
My apologies, but could we stick to the topic of the year and data?
Those resources to upgrade the Douglas County Youth Center, which has an increasing population. When we're at ninety-one kids and five, six years ago, we were assured by its proponents that a fifty-four bed facility would be sufficient, something is seriously, seriously wrong. And so this report is good because it points out where we are and where we're going. Where we're going is up in terms of the number of kids that we lock up. And what we need to do is take a cold look at where we are across the street in the empty kids jail. So I want to thank the folks who put this together and brought this again to the agenda and I hope that the public will look at it on our website where it should be later today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, we'll go to Commissioner Borgson.
I just want to again reiterate what Commissioner Rogers was saying. It's funny, I have no clue what graphs Commissioner Kavanaugh is looking at, but those are downward trends, not upwards. The numbers speak for themselves and I hope that they are posted fast and widely so that people can see the numbers and the truths rather than the BS that's being blown over here today.
We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm gonna put the olive branch out there one more time to close it, just to say that it is a disastrous report. It's a disastrous report in respect to the fact that resources not being put into it, address the length of stay. So my olive branch is, if you're serious about doing something with the the kids of color population, then I'm I'm way open to that. And I also say, if you're serious about doing something to rehab existing D C Y C, I am super serious with that. Because you have to make the move to be able to rehab D C Y C to open it up to a service that's there. So to to put the branch out there, I'm more than open on it because, you know, like I said, you know, the the days of sticks and stones can break my bones. I mean, that's not offending me. I mean, I am offended that there's a continuous grievance tool on the building when the fact is, it's there. But the fact is, if you if you're really there and wanting to help the kids, which other than the forty-four that may be in there on a serious charge, the real help for them is a service and that's like deemed in law, because if you're on probation, you need to have that service. I just want to put the mark out there that I'm open to that and always open to a betterment of the kids.
Thank you, we'll go to Commissioner Borgson.
Well, and I just want to reiterate that I have asked multiple times for us to do a couple of things. One is present our community providers who are making a difference to our kids and families in the community and are doing great things. I think it's important that we flip this narrative of negativity about our kids because it is affecting our our kids. I sat in a group of kids at the end of last year and it broke my heart that they feel that they're being lumped into this all kids are bad narrative that's going on in our community and that's the farthest thing from the truth. I have put out three options that we could look at. There's been no discussion during budget time, there's been no discussion just in general about the facility and I think it's time that we do that. It's important that we do that so that the citizens know that we're looking at these things and that there are people in this community that are interested and want to help. And again, for us providing the correct information and positive information will get us on the right trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's there's certain things in life we have control over and there are certain things we don't. And I I'm not going to get all philosophical about it, but that's the way it is. Once you've been able to identify what you have control over, then you can actually do what I would like to call broken field running, or you could actually make a difference. Once you've identified it. This whole this whole thing with this new facility downtown was done over five, almost over five years ago. I've been on this board for four years. And what I can tell you right now, after being on this board for four years, is we have an infrastructure problem right now at this point. We also are are, we have an infrastructure problem because we have plenty of infrastructure, but we have control over a certain amount of it. What I mean by that is, we our resources are limited. Remember, I've said this before, the state allows us a certain amount of resources. They also force us to to use those resources in certain ways, at least seventy-five to eighty percent of the time. If we had control over the type of resources totally, the type of resources that we have right now, based on whether they were mistakes in the past or or foresight to say, we're going to have issues based on criminal statistics, our resources are limited right now or both facilities would be open. Our, let me repeat that, our resources are limited or both facilities would be running. We've had at least five conversations about running simultaneous facilities. But the numbers aren't, they don't add up. We don't have the money, the resources aren't there. I can I can also tell you, based on this report, over the last four years that I've been on this board, and we've talked about intervention and prevention services and we all know, and Commissioner Borgson's right, there's plenty of organizations out there that we have public-private partnerships with that are doing good intervention and prevention work. But do you know what, the funny thing is? The only legitimate report that I could sink my teeth into, I wrote on it, the only legitimate report that I have seen, the time I've been on this county board, that that shows data relating to services provided and success stories relating to those services? The home program. It's all I've got. And it is successful. Is it is it as successful as we want it to be? Probably not. Rondi and Mark and the folks, the home program is all I've got. I'm gonna go through these numbers again today and I'm gonna go, these are services that we at the county level provide that are helping our youth. And I can tell you, and I'm not castigating any of the other intervention and prevention services that we work with, I don't have those numbers. You want to know why, so so here's the point, you want to know why these numbers are going up? All you have to do is look at criminology statistics, all you have to do is look at the numbers. And then you have to look and see how much of these services these youth are being provided and how successful those services are. Again, finally, what I said from the very outset, what do we have control over and what do we not have control over? Some of those public-private partnerships and the organizations that are working on the ground, doing good work out there, we don't have control over them. But I can talk to Rondi and Mark or anybody else over at the at D C Y C anytime and they'll provide me information and data that indicates how we're helping youth. I appreciate the work they're doing, I don't have to say that, I'm just telling you, I appreciate it. And this is the data I've got.
It's time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the presentation today? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like, on the last two, I I missed some of this because I was in the bathroom, but at least the last part I heard of Commissioner Friend, I I don't agree that the home program is the only program that can give you numbers. I adamantly disagree with that. They're available, the only thing you gotta do is ask. Programs that we get that fund through, that's funded through us, some of them are through the state. So if you want that, that data goes to the crime commission. Only thing you gotta do is ask the crime commission, you work for it, you know where that data is. And any other data that's needed to some degree, it could be presented. Because I've been in meetings where where those have been presented. So the only thing I'm saying in that respect is that's not quite a a piece. Now, when you say we don't control some things, we do control some of the piece in pre-adjudication. And the home program does a great job where it is, but there's some reconstruction that can be done there to be able to open that up to access more. So there are support services that are around there that if aligned up in a in a in another way, the restructure can, but that's not exactly it, that that's the only thing, that there's numbers out there and and to be seen. And that makes it seem like the home program is the only game in town. And 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 one of the things that's the issue is that you can only access the home program when you go into detention. So there's there's some restructuring that can be done in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Rogers, I don't, I I I don't think we're debating. I I I don't necessarily disagree with you. But my point is, the only one, and maybe we need to do... But my point is, the only one, and maybe we need to do a better job of parading some of these folks up in front of us and showing us these statistics. So maybe it's my laziness, potential laziness, that indicates that I'm not getting the type of data that I need. So I would stand down on that, and I'll give you that point. But what I'm telling you is I can sink my teeth into these numbers. Just because somebody's at D C Y C doesn't mean they're not being served. Just because somebody's, just because a youth is at D C Y C doesn't mean that we're not providing valuable services. The most valuable service I've seen is the home program. And if we can continue to push, to have folks come in here that actually have received state or county funding and say, here's what those stats look like, then maybe it makes it a little easier to digest. That's my only point. I even said from the outset, and again, I don't think we're in, I don't think we're in major disagreement. I know there's organizations out there doing good work. I think it's incumbent upon us to have them come up here and say, look, here's the work we're doing. We're working right along with D C Y C. We're doing all this stuff. How much money have we given away since ARPA and all of these other things? Have we had any of them come up here and tell us where the value add has been? We should probably start doing that. We probably should have done it two years ago. We probably should have done it a year ago. We haven't. It's stuff that we have actually have a little bit of control over. Chris, I agree with you. My thing is, I want stuff that I can say, you know what? 25% success rates. When I look at the home program data, I can see success story. They show them right in here. They show them right here. This is a success story. They're categorizing success stories. That means that the youth is not detained within a certain period of time, and that youth is actually either back in school or actually being a productive member of the society. So there are other numbers out there. I think we ought to be aggressive, and I think we ought to bring them up here. Go get them. That's my point. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the presentation? If not, I want to thank Abby, Rondi, and Kim for putting the data and PowerPoint together. Ronnie, did you have something? Oh, yes. There were additional speakers? Okay. I would have done all the speakers and then discussion. We should have had all the speakers up front. I didn't realize we had a queue. Okay. Who's next?
Okay, good morning. Speaking of the home program. We'll go ahead and start with the first slide. This graphic shows our annual admissions to the home program. During 2024, we had 106 youth admitted to the home program, which is close to where we were in 2023. These numbers have come back since the pandemic dip in 2021 and 2022. This next slide shows home program admissions by race and ethnicity. With regards to race and ethnicity, our home program population closely mirrors that at D C Y C. The majority of the home program participants are youth of color, about 80%, with Black and Hispanic youth making up the largest groups. Like with D C Y C, we have also seen a sizable increase in the population of Asian youth in the program. Gender is also similar to the D C Y C population during 2024. The home program population was 79% males and 21% females. During the intake screening process, probation intake officers use their risk assessment instrument to assign youth to a score that indicates generally what type of supervision is needed for the youth. Youth who score between the score of zero and five are eligible for release without restrictions, and youth who score between six and nine are eligible for alternatives to detention like the home program. During 2024, 40% of the youth admitted to the home program scored between six and nine, and 9% scored between zero and five. Youth who score between 10 and 11 are eligible for staff-secured detention, while youth who score 12 or higher should be recommended for detention. During 2024, 44% of the youth admitted to the home program had scores of 10 or higher. The final 7% of the home program admissions during 2024 did not have an R A I score. I'd really like to highlight the success that we have seen with our home program participants. We started implementing stability services a few years ago. In 2021, before stability services were widely in place, the home program had a 53% success rate. Since then, we've seen successful completions increase to 63% in 2022. It grew to 66% in 2023. And last year, we were at 65% during this, for this success. This graph shows the use of stability services. This shows how much we've ramped up the use of stability services. We went from 30% of the home program youth assigned to stability services in 2022 to 82% of the youth in 2024. So we've seen a big increase in the amount that the stability services are being used by the youth. In addition, we've seen an increase in the proportion of youth successfully completing their stability services recommendations. In 2024, about 70% of the home program youth with stability services completed them successfully. The use of stability services and the successful completion rates of those services has also likely played a part in the increase of length of time youth are supervised on the home program. During 2024, the average days the home program youth spent under supervision was 69 days. Youth who successfully completed the program participated for 82 days, while unsuccessful participants were under the supervision for about 56 days. It is important to note that the average length of supervision for youth who unsuccessfully completed the home program in 2021, prior to the implementation of the stability service, was only 32 days. This indicates that stability services may help delay the onset of the behaviors that might result in the home program revoking their participation. Finally, this graphic, this last graphic shows our average daily home program population. During 2024, we supervise an average of 23 youth per day, which is incomparable to our pre-pandemic average daily population in 2018 and in 2019. Any questions?
Let's go ahead and do the Jack as well, and then we'll take final questions. Thank you, Rondi.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for making time this morning. I'm Sean Johnson, Director of the Juvenile Assessment Center. We always just say the Jack for short. I want to center us this morning on the Jack's purpose. Often, you'll hear diversion. Our main purpose is to assess juveniles who come to the attention of the county attorney's office. So I just, I want to start off with our core purpose is screening and assessment of all youth coming to the attention of the county attorney's office who are not otherwise court-involved. We really want to try to divert those kids from the court process by supporting their risks and needs. And our target population, just to make sure that we have the distinction of the kids we're talking about at the Juvenile Assessment Center. All of our youth come by way of the county attorney's office. They are cited by law enforcement. They could be street released. They could be booked and released at the youth center. They could present to detention but be screened out of detention. All of the youth who are not then headed to court come by way of the Juvenile Assessment Center. They do not have an open court docket. They are not detained. They are not on probation. We do also serve youth with truancy referrals that come formally to the county attorney's office. We serve kids who are involved in both the child welfare and juvenile justice systems through our Youth Impact Initiative. And I'll give a shout out that tomorrow night at 5:00, hopefully you all got that flyer, at 5:00, that there will be a special presentation at Project Harmony regarding our Youth Impact Service to our youth in our community. And then we also do serve kids who reside in Douglas County but get citations outside of the county. So we do some back and forth with other jurisdictions on serving those kids. The following data presentation are for the Jack youth cited by law enforcement. These are not the truancy youth. These are not the crossover youth. And this wonderful graphic that Abby and Kim have shared, I'm sure numerous times, I just want to highlight where we sit in this pathways to exit the justice system. Although we are at exit four and five, I want to note that we are also at exit six and seven. So we are serving those kids who are presenting to detention but screening out. We are also serving kids who do get filed initially in court, but then can come our way on an anticipation of dismissal, sort of a last resort effort to divert those kids from full adjudication. So we're working hard to really try and divert as many youth as possible from that front end of the system. And really, the importance of screening and assessment. We really need to target the underlying risk and needs of the youth so that we can appropriately match services. If the service does not match the child's need, the child will not get better. The child likely gets worse. It's critical that they are screened both for their own safety. We screen for suicide risk right up front and for all of their underlying risks and needs. It's also important to have a neutral place to screen and assess. We work across the nation with other assessment centers, and we're really held up as a model quite often for our neutral capacity and referring to services in the community to serve those kids. And we do consider the whole child when we do our screening and assessment. We look at all of the factors that you would normally think of, family, peers, school, use of leisure time. We also look at trauma, behavioral health, the strengths and challenges that they have overall, and we ask them what they need. So it's a very participatory assessment process. So diving right into the youth that were referred to the Jack in 2024, we had 1,172 youth referred for assessment. And this is the breakdown in age, gender, and race ethnicity. We see year-over-year same trend. I put this just a single year because it truly, it looks nearly the same every single year. The only exception is we have gained probably a couple percentage in African-American kids. That's steady around 30%, but you see last year was 35. And similarly, the zip code map. We do see the heavier concentrations of youth referred to us in the eastern side of Douglas County. But please note that there are kids in every zip code across the entire county that we're serving. And trend on offenses, these are the top 10 offenses. And this trend is typical, that this top 10 represents 80% of all offenses. So there are offenses you won't see there that we have quite a number of. For instance, the last couple of years, unlawful occupy, those stolen vehicles, made the top 10, but in 2024, that dropped out of our top 10. We see arson, sexual assault, controlled substance, many offenses that you're not seeing there because they don't make the top 10. These are the top 10 offenses. And the risk and needs of the youth that we're seeing, these are the domains of scoring on our risk assessment instrument so that you could get a snapshot of where youth are scoring moderate or high, meaning there is needing attention to taking care of that risk and need area. So you see always very high in education. Our kids are underachieving in school, struggling in school, not going to school. Many of the youth, most of the youth that we're seeing for law violations struggle educationally. And that personality, that's where you're seeing the behavioral health issues of our kids. And you're seeing that 75% of all the youth that we assess are moderate or high in that area. And overall, for all of the kids we see, it's 46% of the kids are scoring moderate and high in their risk areas, needing some level of intervention, some formal intervention. So to highlight formal versus informal intervention, this is the trend graph that we've had for several years, and you saw that, you see the COVID dip and then the rebound to pre-COVID levels of kids that we're seeing. We began many, many years ago working with the county attorney's office to offer informal diversion. So for those kids who are scoring lower in their risk to reoffend, we recommend to the county attorney's office that they receive an informal diversion, an immediate diversion from the system, that they don't need services and supports in order to be successful. So where you see the gray, those are, oh no, I'm sorry. Where you see the yellow, those are recommendations for informal diversion. And then those youth who are that moderate and high risk need some formal diversion, need to be matched up with services and supports in the community. That would be formal diversion. So satisfactory completion is a mark of those kids who went on formal diversion. And we always have questions on recidivism. We do run this sort of different, for different timeframes. So these are 2023 kids. By the end of 2024, here was their recidivism. This is for all youth referred in 2023. For those youth who didn't come to assessment, so they failed to show, they received another law violation that was more egregious before they could come, they moved away, some kids moved away. The breakdown of kids who didn't come for assessment, their recidivism was nearly 40%. For those kids who failed diversion, did not successfully complete diversion in 2023, their recidivism was 54%. So if they were, and some of that is those increased law violations. So those are the higher-risk kids, the much higher-risk kids. The kids who received informal diversion in 2023, we had a 9% recidivism rate for those kids. And for those kids who successfully completed diversion in 2023, there was a 22% recidivism rate. Now, those two, much to the credit of our Douglas County Attorney's Office, we see those kids again. They're teenagers, and teenagers have bumps. A typical recidivism by A typical recidivism, by the way, for diversion nationally is 20%. So, we're, we're fairly comfortable with that. Of course, everyone wants it to be zero, but again, these are adolescents. And so, we will see those kids again at the Jack. They won't go on to be court-involved most of the time. And just a quick summary of our 24 expansions that this board was in support of, and of course, we're asking for continued support of the expansion. Our caseloads are half of what they were, and if you'll remember, they were alarmingly up towards 100 cases at a time per specialist prior to our expansion. And our timelines, we weren't able to see kids before 2 months. So, if a youth was referred to us, we could not assess them until 2 months out. Those, all of those have been drastically cut due to the expansion. So, our caseloads right now are hovering at about 40. And our timelines are, of course, it depends on the family. Oftentimes, we're getting kids in that week or the next week. Again, it's family consideration, and so sometimes they need to push that out. But we're at about 2 weeks where we were at 2 months. So, that's been just a fantastic impactful way for kids to get that attention that they need so much sooner. Also, the release without restriction and book-and-release kids, those kids who are presenting to detention for a booking based on the charge itself, that they have to be paper-booked because of the, it's a felony or, or something else. And then, those kids who are presenting to detention intake but are screened out completely, we're, we're calling those families within 24 hours. The county attorney is expediting those over to us. We're calling those families and getting them in very quickly, too. So, all of that has been as a result of that expansion of staff. And we have implemented or in the middle of implementing T Care Plus, which is a trauma-informed process that helps our team be the best we can possibly be to care for the youth that are coming our direction. And it's an interactive process where we're helping them center in appointments and helping them just be present and be calm and de-escalate when there's some escalation. So, that's a great process. We're just getting into that. It's a 6-month process. And along with that, we're implementing a trauma screen. So, we already have a behavioral health screen. We're screening for suicide risk. And we're implementing a specific trauma screen so we can make some more targeted referrals for behavioral health where there's trauma because we certainly see a lot of trauma for our youth, and we really want to, we want to do a better job at targeting those interventions.
Thank you, Shawn. Thank you, Rondi. A couple of you were at the, the third round mark already, but due to the, the speaker lineup situation, I'll allow a final 2-minute round in addition so that you can comment on the home and the Jack, if you'd like to do so. Commissioner Kavanaugh, I see your light on.
Yeah, I have a few on the Jack. Thanks for this. When we were speaking with the youth center folks, and we talked about the majority-minority population in the youth center. It's about 90% kids of color. And the concern that we have, because that's way out of whack with what our community represents. And I was just struck by Page 7. You have a similar breakout. And it shows about a 63% minority-majority and 35% Caucasian. So, I dug down on that a little bit. And, and there are disparities between the youth center population of black kids at 56% and the Jack percentage of black kids at 35%. Youth center percentage of white kids at 20%, Jack percentage of white kids, 33%. And kind of on and on with one distinction. Why do we have this? Why is the racial disparity different in Jack than it is in the youth center? It seems that we're treating more white kids in the Jack program than actually are represented in the incarcerated population.
I wish I had an answer for you, Commissioner. I know, you know, committees have looked at this issue for years and years and years. All I can say is sort of similar to what has been shared by the youth center. We get the kids we get, you know, the, and so I, I wish I had an answer.
I appreciate that. The other question I have is on recidivism. The youth centers percentage, I think, came in at about 40%, 41%. And the total population number on Page 12 doesn't seem to be indicated. If you could give us that so we could compare.
Oh, and Commissioner, thank you so much for posing that question because our recidivism is a different definition. And I'd be glad to also email that to make sure that you realize their recidivism is kids coming back.
I think it was in 6 months.
Kids coming back to the youth center where our recidivism is, is a citation. And so, the recidivism definition is slightly different also, but I'll provide that.
Just an overall population number would be good.
Yeah, yeah. I'll provide that.
Anybody else on this presentation? We'll go to Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you for the presentation. And on Page 10, when we talk about the 76.12% of children at risk due to education, what do we, I mean, we see it in the youth center. I mean, we see it in our adult facility. The, the need for that educational piece to be beefed up a bit, especially when it comes to the reading aspects of education. What do we do at the Jack when we see some child come in that scores, I guess, I don't know if it would be high or low on education, but scores so that it points out there's a need for educational attention?
So, typically, they're not only scoring in education, you know, they're scoring kind of moderate or high across several. We have several programs that are addressing sort of peer relations and education and family, something like that. So, we have some, some groups that are really getting in there and trying to get to the value that kids have and, and to help them put more value in themselves and their education. So, that's one avenue. We work with a couple of school programs, like Pathways to Success, that's in the school. We can, we refer to them. So, there's some service providers that we, we make some referrals based on that. It's, but the problem's much larger than we can wrap our arms around.
Right.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Larry, I'll give you a 2-minute round since the speaker situation with the lineup. Go ahead, but 2-minute round then.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Seems that words matter and best practices aren't necessarily the best practices from what we've heard here discussed today. And most of you are not in agreement with each other. So, what happens when the federal government asks for their money back? You don't have enough money now. You want more money, but it wasn't your money to start with. So, maybe all the best practices and programs that you started and voted on over the years, because they're best practices, haven't been effective. So, my tax dollars were wasted. We didn't get to vote on the new Justice Center. I do agree that you need some better mental illness programs. However, because of the practice of protecting CYAs, the professionals don't want to hear everything they need to hear, even in the court systems here. Recently, I guess, they pronounced that the brain matures at age 25. So, oh, that kid, young adult, no longer qualifies for this because he turned 25 in May. Oh, boy. Send him over to the adult section. But you know what? When there's crimes committed and people are charged, the system needs to listen to some of the other people involved. I know as a citizen, if I think crimes were involved, committed, I'm supposed to speak up. I'm supposed to say something. I'm supposed to stand up. When I tried to, I was denied by the system because of privacy laws. Again, I'm not putting all the blame on you. Their interpretation of the privacy laws to protect their own butts, CYA, they call it. We don't want that information here because it'll destroy my case. I tried to intercede in a case with information that would prove there was mental illness involved. I was denied. I knew more about this situation all over the years than they did. They wouldn't listen to me. That was a private little get-together between a county attorney and a defense, public defender, that decided, they were going to decide what was best for that kid, that young adult, without knowing, without assessing. They gave the wrong information to the judge, so the judge did not have the right facts. But he had the opportunity to listen, and he denied it.
Thank you, Larry.
Miscarriage of justice because of privacy laws, misinterpretation of it.
Thank you, Larry.
Oh, well, thank you very much, two twice in one day. Oh, boy.
Anybody else on this presentation? If not, we'll move forward. Thank you again, Shawn, Abby, Rondi, Kim, and everybody who helped put it together. We'll move forward. Under Human Resources, we had a weekly personnel from civil service as presented. We do have a need for executive session for the purposes of litigation, legal advice, and contract negotiation. Do we have a motion second to go to Zech session? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purposes of litigation, legal advice, and contract negotiations.
...
I got a conversation with Furlock and how. Okay.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Rogers, seconded by Friend at 11:15 a.m., passed seven to zero.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Rogers, seconded by Friend at 11:15 a.m., passed seven to zero.